Did you hear us? Make sure we can back with Ed. Ed, are you able to hear us?
Yes ma'am.
All right, wonderful. All right, Andy, we have.
We all set?
Yep, we're all set.
Okay, good. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Monday, June 22, 2020 at 7:00 PM. And first, I'd like to take a roll call. Lozano? Eilie?
Here.
Israel?
Here.
Helmerick?
Here.
Welk?
He's here.
Ed Welk?
One second.
He was here, he's gone.
Yeah, it looks like he's gone.
Ed, are you back?
Um, why don't we note in the minutes when, oh hi Ed, we see you. Hi Ed. You're present? Hi Ed, we're just doing roll call. Ed? Are you able to hear us? Ed? Hello Ed? I think we should just note that, Ed. Ed, we're doing roll call, are you able to unmute and let us know you're with us? All right, Andy, I think I would just keep moving.
Okay, Preet is here and Bill Rowe is excused absent. First, should we read through the electronic meeting conduct?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that if you'd like.
Okay.
All right, thank you everyone for joining us. We are conducting this public meeting via video conference. We'd like it if you could mute yourself until you're called on. I'd like you to know that we are recording this meeting. I just want to make sure that we are indeed recording that and this is a public meeting. Please mute yourself and we will call on everyone wanting to speak during the two public comment periods. I will be doing screen sharing and I'm happy to show any items that are included in the Planning Commission packet. I have it all queued up on my computer if needed. And if all the commissioners could please say your name before speaking. And each vote would be roll call, so that way we know who is speaking. And for those who are just joining us on the phone, it's very helpful when you say your name before speaking. So those are Zoom instructions. We also, in terms of the comments, so we do not have any public hearing items during this. We do have general public comment.
Well, I got it, but I don't have any audio.
Hi Ed.
Hi Ed.
The public comment period is five minutes. I will be a timekeeper. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you do have five minutes for that group. Just a reminder, this is not a question and answer session, but it's a time for you to voice your comments. If you are commenting on an item or the agenda, you might want to speak during that first public comment period so that commissioners can take into account any comments you might make during those agenda items. After our regular agenda items, we will have a second comment period. So, we're doing our best via the Zoom meeting, we're gonna, everyone has heard. Comments are included within our record. So with that.
Audio.
Hello? I know one of our commissioners, Ed, is trying to join us. So, we did roll call and now we're on the approval of the agenda item.
Okay, I assume everybody has had a chance to review the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions anybody would like to make? Okay, if there's no changes or amendments to the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I would move to approve the agenda.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second from Lozano.
Go down to.
Okay, a motion by, second by Lozano. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, we'll do a roll call. Lozano?
Yes.
Eilie?
Yes.
Israel?
Yes.
Helmerick?
Yes.
Welk?
Yes.
Preetz? Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'd like to move on to the approval of the minutes from our April 27, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any questions or corrections to page one?
Yes, I'd like to note in number two, also present, Council Nick Curcio, spelled C-U-R-C-I-O. And that should be corrected throughout the minutes.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Anything else on page one? Page two? Page three?
I just had one spot. I guess it's the second paragraph, one, two, three, four, five, six, sentence down. The health, safety and welfare of the area have been, should be addressed, an ED at the end of address. And standards are included.
Thank you. Anything else on page three?
I have one under discussion. The third line is reclamation, once the sand, is it reclamation, C-L-A-I-M-A? Reclamation? Or not? Or is that spelled right?
I think that's right.
Okay. Usually I use spell check, but I wasn't sure. Okay, that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else on page three? Page four?
Yeah, it's Helmerick, and the first paragraph, line three at the end, eagle is actually E-G-L-E.
Yes, you're right.
And that should be corrected throughout as well.
I noticed down towards the bottom of page four, Becky, that eagle misspelled the same way again.
Oh, yeah, I know that too, I don't know why. All right, thanks.
I said throughout, Andy.
Yeah, I know.
Curcio is several times there too. Okay, sorry. My apologies.
Hey, don't be silly.
Okay.
So then, this is small, but the very last line of page four, the evening's discussion, the apostrophe.
Oh, it doesn't belong there.
But before the S.
Anything else on page four? Page five?
Under public comment, the third one, D Swan, and he may have actually said D-E-Q, but the D-E-Q is now eagle.
Yes, he did say D-E-Q though, and that's why I put it in there.
A lot of people still do.
Right, but I kind of wondered about that, but he said D-E-Q and I was, I put it in because it's the minutes of the meeting.
Right, okay. As long as we all understand that's the same as eagle.
Yes. But I could put eagle in parentheses if you want.
Yeah, why not?
I will. Twice, right?
Yep.
Anything else on page five?
Yeah, I just have a question in the motion to adjourn number 10. Do we really adjourn at 7:24?
No, at 8:24, that's a mistake. I caught that today when I read it, sorry, you're right.
That is not a 24-minute meeting.
No.
And it's all going at 4:00 the same, so.
Yes, 8:24. And again, in number four, yes.
Yep, cool.
Okay.
Commissioners, I don't know what page it's on, but I did get a note here in the chat, and it's sort of a new function for us and how we respond to chats, but we did get a comment from Lori Goshorn, who spoke during final, during public comments, that the minutes do not reflect what she said. I know Rebecca, you have everything on video or on recording.
Okay.
So, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, how you want to address that specific comment. I know that the public comment comes after you vote on the minute, so would you like me to unmute, Ms. Goshorn?
Sure, let's take the opportunity to hear what she has to say, and if there's a correction that needs to be made, let's make sure it's made and the minutes reflect actually what she said.
Am I on?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for allowing me this opportunity. I use the word interesting and maybe I should have said something along the lines of concern that the item in question, the lake, was passed without the permitting with the D-E-Q, because that's, that can be a lengthy process. But I, you know, and I said, I'm not part of the legal process and I'm not part of the Planning Commission, so there, I'm sure is a lot that I don't understand, but that I was glad that this would now be on the docket for the D-E-Q to consider and take a look at the whole thing. So it's not that I thought something was nice or agreed with something, it was more that I was really concerned by what happened. But that there.
But, but at the time, Lori, I believe you used the word interesting in that. And that's what was reflected, and that's why the minutes say interested.
Yeah, I know, and then, but the second part, and I don't have that in front of me because I listened to tape and I wrote down exactly what I said. And like I said, it says interested, it's interesting that you passed this without permitting first. I'm not part of the legal process and I don't understand the whole thing, but at least it was on the docket for approval and what really should be clarified is by the D-E-Q. That they were going to into it.
We can add that by the D-E-Q.
Okay.
Yep.
I suggest we say eagle, please.
Yes, yes, eagle.
Yeah, the same parentheses that you did before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
So, would you like it to say, under number eight, Lori Goshorn expressed she finds it interesting that the commission passed it prior to other permitting, i.e. eagle?
No, I think it's, it's the last part of that sentence, and glad it's on the docket for pending approval by eagle.
Oh, by eagle?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, all right. Okay. I will add by eagle to that sentence.
Great.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on the on the minutes from the April meeting? This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve meetings.
Motion to approve the minutes.
That's Lozano.
We've got a motion by Lozano to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Then I'll second that.
Second by Eilie?
By Eilie, yes.
Any question on, or further discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll have a roll call. Welk?
Yes.
Preetz? Yes. Helmerick?
Yes.
Israel?
Yes.
Eilie?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Hey, the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously. Okay, at this time, I would like to open the floor for public comments. As was noted by Linay earlier, please limit your comments to three minutes for individuals or five minutes for an individual speaking on behalf of a group. And please remember, this is not a question and answer session. It is an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the Planning Commission.
So, I think I will, Andy, I will start with Stacy Workman. Since you were one of the first to join, Stacy, would you like to speak during this public comment period? Stacy Workman? Okay, I will move on to Don Doherty.
Hello?
Hi, Don, would you like to speak during public comment?
Well, yeah, concerning the 633 Alleghan Road project, just a mere road, about the placement of the road into the, to the complex or development. And, I mean, where are we on that, you know? We, most of the people in the, or get, you know, talking about that they don't like it being where it's at. Can it be moved? Where do we, you know, how do we, how do we handle that? There's going to be over 270, total of 271 units in that area. A concern over, you know, the traffic system, what they're doing with sewer. The amount of traffic for 271 units going in and out of that street right in front of our addition. We, I guess, need to know what's going on there and how we're going to handle that, or how you're going to handle it, or the county's going to handle it. So, that's basically my questions, or how I feel about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
That's on Alleghan Road too, sorry. Can't we go on to Alle, why can't they go, oops, sorry. Am I back on?
Yes, you have a few more minutes, yes.
I'm wondering why he can't go into Alleghan Road and not, and rather than 63rd Street. Both, I know they talked about it's all residential, but so is the entrance across the street from it right now, that he's cut through already, so concerned about that. I'm done.
Do we have, hi, this is Lavinia Rodriguez. Did we have to sign up in advance to speak?
No, 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 thank you. We're just going to get through the list here, Lavinia.
Okay, sorry, thanks.
No problem. All right, I am going to go back to Stacy Workman, because Stacy, I see that you raised your hand. Hello? Would you like to speak, Stacy?
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are, Stacy, yes.
Okay, thanks, sorry, sorry for the audio problems. So, I share Don's same concern with the location of the entrance. So, looking at the May 13, 20 master plan overview, it looks like it was even questioned whether that area should even be light industrial. So I wonder if that was addressed at all. The, one of my other concerns is, this appears just to be phase one, that there is a master plan that seems to exist that the engineers have reviewed, and we're only looking at one piece of this, because it looks like at the end of the cul-de-sac, that's where the rest of the plan would continue. So, you know, I'd like to see the master plan as well, just because this is only a piece of it. With regard to the location of the entrance, it looks like there's about 60 feet. So when we pull out of the Hawthorne, when we pull out of Hawthorne, we'll see 60 feet of the whole storage area. So, it's, that's just not, it's just unsightly for, for the residents. And then I think we're also concerned, because this is a residential street, we have 10 children that live on the street. They play at the entrance of the street. We're very concerned about the safety of our children on the street and just residents pulling in and out of the street, particularly with that location of the entrance will right across the street from Hawthorne. And then lastly, with regard to just the visibility of, of, and I guess I should say the, to me, the unsightliness of the property. It doesn't, to me, seem like care has been taken to try to preserve the trees on that. I do see that it's been approved to add some serbians, spruce and white pine. But we from Hawthorne are still going to be able to see this whole development, and I'm just worried about property values being maintained once this is built. So, if to summarize, we're, I would say we're first concerned about the safety of the children playing on the street, safety for residents pulling in and out of the street, particularly because a lot of people on 63rd Street drive at 60, 65 miles per hour. That entrance is at an point that's just beyond the hill, and so there's limited visibility, and there may not be acceptable deceleration time.
Okay, thank you, you're at your three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Julie Hardy? Julie, were you going to speak during public comment?
Yeah, this is Jeff Hardy. Julie's my wife, and we dialed in together, but really just want a second what Mr. Doherty and Ms. Workman mentioned already. Appreciate the inclusion of the site plan in the, in the meeting materials this time, and I think I'm, I'm pretty impressed by what I see in the site plan with the, you know, general maintenance of the area is, and it's, you know, something representative of its natural state, but do agree that the location of the entrance has caused me some concern as the father of three young children. We've seen at times during the, the work that's been going on in the, in the lot across Hawthorne Court, that we've had some traffic using Hawthorne Court to accept, to access the location. It's been pretty minimal, but I think in general, I have the same concerns. Limited ability to decelerate, given the speed limit on 63rd Street, proximity to Old Alleghan Road. The location selected just doesn't seem to be in the best interest of the, of the road commission. I agree it meets the permitting requirements, but certainly does raise concerns to me as a resident of Hawthorne Court. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Um, thank you so much. Next, I am going to ask Lavinia Rodriguez. Lavinia, would you like to speak? Lavinia Rodriguez, would you like to speak?
Hi, sorry, couldn't unmute myself. Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to second, third and fourth what the three previous speakers said, Jeff Hardy, Stacy Workman and the other gentleman, his name I didn't catch. As another parent living in this association directly across the street, I am very concerned about the danger from vehicles. And so I definitely would ask that that entrance be moved to a more appropriate spot, as the previous speakers spoke. And I'm also concerned with just the general deforestation that's happened. I would ask that they add a berm and additional evergreens to hide the unsightly view. But honestly, my primary concern is definitely that road, that entrance that they built directly across the street from where you've got 10 children under the age of 10 playing in our, on our street, which our residents know about, but the people that are coming to this entrance that's directly across the street from us, they have no way of knowing that there's all these children playing, that maybe sometimes lose control of their bikes or their scooters, and I'm just afraid we're going to have a terrible accident, and we'd all like to avoid that, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lavinia.
Um, I have a phone number, oh, I think that was Ms. Workman. Someone, Scott? Scott, are you speaking about, in public comment?
Well, I'm not sure which Scott, but I didn't have a public comment.
Scott, you're an agenda item, you're our next agenda item. Thank you.
No comment.
I am going to unmute Jeff Johnson. Are you here to speak during public comment?
I have no comment.
Thank you, Jeff. I see Richard Brady. Richard, would you like to unmute yourself and speak during public comment? Richard Brady? Okay, I am going to move on to Barbara Schiff. Barbara Schiff, would you like to speak during public comment?
Sure, hi. I've lived in Hawthorne Court for 15 years, we're the second house there, and it was once very, very quiet in the area. Now we're very happily filled with new homes and 10 children, so it's really lively and fun. So it's really lively and fun and everything, and it is very upsetting to see such a big complex go up, or whatever it is, that will have a lot of traffic going in and out. I worry about children, I worry about dogs. And it is, I think, unfortunately, going to be a little unsightly. So it would be great if they could make it a very pleasing optic there. And that's it, but I do worry about traffic mostly. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Matt Kuhn?
Yes, hello. Thank you. I appreciate the commission giving me an opportunity to speak. I also am a resident of Hawthorne Court with also three children. And I echo many of the same sentiments of my neighbors that have spoken earlier on this call. First and foremost, I'm concerned for the safety of the children and the residents in the area. So I would like to see if there could be some consideration given to move the access, at a minimum, move the access road to Old Allegan. That would be, I think, much preferred. I also am concerned, I've heard quite a few comments about the optics and what this is gonna look like from Hawthorne Court and our neighborhood. I'm also concerned about the traffic and the noise, because I think it's gonna affect the overall kind of peaceful quality of life that the neighborhood has. And the, I don't know if this is gonna be operated 24/7, what hours of the day and night, how many vehicles are gonna be traveling in and out. But I think the overall lighting, traffic, and noise really will affect the, the safety and quality of life. So, um, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Next, I have Scott Sullivan. Scott, would you like to speak? Right.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, Denise Shipley?
Sorry, I'm trying to figure this out. I have no comment at this time, but thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Someone, Arthur of Sutter?
Yes, good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak for public comment on this project. I am president of the Pheasant Woods homeowners association. While I do not live on Hawthorne Court, I live on Coppice Court, and I support the views of my neighbors that have already been expressed at this forum about the project.
Thank you. Eric Kershert, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
You're not the first one, so don't bother about that, but no comments from us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lori Goschorn? Lori? Okay, Gina Demos? Gina Demos? Okay, Alan Crissonik?
Al. Hello, thank you for this opportunity to speak. On May 28, under advisement from Laney, I had a conversation with Alby, the developer, and we talked about the selection of the road, of the placement of the road. And he stated that the road commission selected the location, but he mentioned that he would be able to possibly offset it by 15 feet, which, listening to the comments from the, my neighbors on Hawthorne, I'm sure that would not be agreeable. But he did mention, too, that he would increase the old forest tree depth, which I think would be pleasing to my neighbors. The conversation was good, constructive, and he also mentioned that he wants to work with the residents of Hawthorne. So, that being said, I have one other issue. A lot of times developments go in and they don't take into account drainage. Now, with the extra asphalt, concrete, and roof that'll be put in that development, that means the water will continually flow out towards 63rd Drainage Ditch and also Old Allegan Drainage Ditch. Now approximately 270 feet from the corner of Old Allegan, along 63rd heading north, there's a drainage ditch that comes out of 6333, the development. And it's in line with a large culvert that drains from the Pheasant Woods Association area. They tie in together, and then they head south along 63rd and turn the corner, and then head west along Old Allegan. Those drainage ditches are completely clogged, and so are those culverts. Now, I brought this to the attention of the road commission, and I sent an email, which I got a terrific response from Andy Preetz today. I would hope that this gets addressed, because what happens is when the water doesn't flow out, it affects the foundations of these homes, and these sump pumps run continually, not to mention the undermining of the roads themselves. And this last horrific rainstorm, which was a couple of weeks ago, the water level was right at the corner, at the road level of 63rd and Old Allegan. So I would appreciate that the road commission addresses this and finally does some maintenance on these drainage ditches. I've lived here 14 years, and those drainage ditches have never been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Al. And then I have Nathan Reed. Nathaniel Reed?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yes, at first, I guess I should thank you for letting me in, but does this also concern the construction build on 63rd and Gleason Road?
No, this is not related to that land.
Okay, and then would that be a different meeting, or have I missed that?
Oh, sir, you can speak about any item related to any topic in our township at this time.
Okay, okay, and I guess I would like to address that. I live a stone throw, a stone throw from this construction site. And prior to this, within, I've lived here six and a half years or so, and the last two, two and a half years, I've watched people go in with pickup trucks dumping roofing, roofing materials, great big piles of garbage, great big piles of roofing waste. And when they started this construction over here, I didn't see none of it leave, but they sure brought in a lot of dirt and just covered it, buried it, and it's all underneath all this dirt they brought in. I didn't know if that was an acceptable policy for new construction. And, um, just kinda curious, too, about the days and times of day that the construction in, now that might be rated for construction over there, or commercial over there, but I am residential, and these guys, in the past month or two or three, they're working Sundays, they're working till nine o'clock, they, they start at quarter to six some mornings. I didn't know if that was like acceptable policy for construction sites. I guess if you all could just consider that, because when RAF Electric went up on the corner of 63rd and Gleason, they, they had dozers in there on Sunday, they had riffers there on Sunday. They work till nine o'clock. A couple of mornings, they're banging their tools at quarter to six in the morning. I'm residential, I can't help it that that's commercial over there. And I hope that these issues are addressed and/or looked into, because I've already put up with a lot of the, I, I consider out of time construction, I guess. So hopefully that gets considered. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan.
If I may, Nathan, would you, I don't know if you feel comfortable sharing right now, but if you have your phone number, I will be in the office tomorrow, and I can look up to see if we have any hours of operation for, you know, permitted uses in terms of construction. And I'm happy to-
Yes, ma'am. I, I am more than happy to give that to you now.
Okay, thank you.
616-212-0520, and Nate is fine, otherwise Nathaniel, please.
Okay, thank you, Nathaniel.
Thank you.
I'm seeing that that is, I've called on everybody. I did get a note via the chat, Mr. Chairman, that Don Doherty had one more item to add. Don, I think you had about a minute left in your time.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I won't take long. I, I'm under, I've, I've heard that Alby has that warehouse area at the Douglas, Blue Star, or the interstate there. He has, that's his property there that they're putting warehouses in. And if you look at what he's done there, it's a mess. And my fear is that's what's gonna happen across the street. It's not ever gonna be complete, and it, and there's gonna be, I mean, it's overgrown. He doesn't, he doesn't take care of the roads. So I'm under the impression that that's his property, too, that he sort of let go. So that kind of gives you a feel, maybe, of how he does things. I'm just, I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
All right, Mr. Chairman, that is everyone that I've called on. If anybody else would like to raise their hand, there are, you can raise your hand if you kind of left-click on your icon. We do have another time for public comments later in the agenda. I believe that is all for now.
Okay, I would like to close public comments at this time and move on to new business, which is Build SB, parcel number 20-003-049-01, located at 6523105, for wholesale sales and service uses within the Commercial One District, for four buildings each with 11,700 square feet of building footprint. Is Scott, Scott Fozgraf with us?
Yes, Scott is with us. I will unmute you in just one second, as I get the item up.
I'm muted.
Oh, hi, Scott. I am, let me just pull up staffer page for everybody. All right, I've got the site plan up. Mr. Chairman, if you'd like Scott to introduce his project.
Okay, Scott, go ahead. You've got the floor.
Thank you, everybody, first. Can you guys hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
There we go.
Hi, Scott.
All right, that changed things. Hi. I appreciate everybody taking the time to spend this evening on a Zoom meeting to look at the site plan. If anybody's driven by the project recently, we're completing the construction of the five buildings that are on the other side of the road. These are simply taking the larger middle building that's existing, and over there now, and putting it up four more times on the other side of the road. I think the site plan is, for the most part, self-explanatory in the application, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
What is, what is the intended use of these buildings, Scott?
In my application, I put them under wholesale sales and service, because that, I think, is the most fitting use, but it's Zone C1, and I don't expect it to be anything other than permitted uses that are allowed under C1.
Okay. And at, and at, this time, there's not going to be water and sewer provided in these buildings?
Correctly, not at this time. There's city water out front in it.
Right.
We need the sewer, it would have to be a septic system anyways, but at this time, there's none proposed in the plans.
Okay.
So no bathrooms?
Correct.
Scott, I, this is Dave Eily. I'm just curious, is, with Phases 1 and 2 combined, how many acres is that of the entire project? I think the entire commercial piece is 17 acres, if I remember correctly. And I'm just wondering how many acres do phases, you know, compose of that, that total, total area?
Oh, the, I don't know that I've got the paperwork in front of me, and I'm not in town at the moment. For the last phase, this particular phase is 3.5 acres. The one that's in front of you this evening. And I think the one before that was probably maybe a little bit less. Look at the site plan, it actually has in the general notes on the right-hand side, it says the total lot square footage. The 3.5 acres, it's in the colored site plan, and then it gives the building square footage and a percentage of coverage.
Right. I did see that. I was just curious to the, I didn't know how, how much of that was still available for, to call upon. That's kind of what I was curious about, but.
I think the easiest answer to that is this backs up against the edge of the area to the west, and then to the north. Obviously, there's a sand hill or a dune there that'll stop any progression going any further north than what you can see visually right now. There is more property, obviously, that goes all the way up to Blue Star.
So I know this isn't part of this, but would that, would that area that goes up to Blue Star be like the next phase, if you will? I'm just trying to picture the whole thing, you know, as, as one, once it's built out.
I don't really have any plans for any other phase or any ideas on any other phases right now, because I don't know, you know, what the interest or what the demand will be. My thoughts purely would be anything that's up on Blue Star would be more customer service-related or more service-related and traffic-related. This is a little bit more private and a little more secluded. Don't expect really much to any traffic back here on these particular uses. And I think that could be different up by Blue Star. I think something up there could be a little more community service.
Okay, that answers my question.
Sure, that's my take on it.
So could you be a little, this is back, could you be a little clear with what type of service you're planning to have or think you might have in these buildings? Give us an example.
I don't have, well, let's see, a sample.
Is it more bolted, right?
I have an aviation business. Now, not that I'm planning on, I have an aviation business that sells Challenger, Bombardier, Challenger 600 parts wholesale, that would operate out of a space like this, which really wouldn't get any customers, would really be internet-related, but it would give somebody, you know, maybe a warehouse to work out of. Got another customer that sells automotive wheels, again, wholesale-only related, no drive-in traffic. I'm thinking that type of uses, possibly you could get a, maybe a plumber or a builder, that's a pickup truck builder or a pickup plumber. But most of those uses are on the other side of the road right now. This side of the road, starting with warehousing of some sort, so you wouldn't need a bathroom, or you wouldn't need an office. But until we build them, I don't know that I- until we build them, I don't know that I would know what the specific uses would be.
Okay.
It would have to fit your C one zone to, to be a proper use.
Scott, I understand this, right? Those, the buildings that are going up, I think you even said this, but they're just going to basically mirror that middle building, the larger one. And they'll be, as far as architecture, the, the look, the design style, you know, they'll look very similar to what's up across the street.
Yes, they are literally the exact building that's across the street, the building that's roughly sixty by two hundred. It has some, once it got up, I liked the elevations and the facade on the front of that building the most. And I think that enhances the area more than some of those smaller standalone buildings. It just doesn't have as much appeal to it from the curb is, is what that larger building does.
Um, Scott?
Simply it is. Yes?
Becky, this is Becky. Um, from a distance, the project looks really nice. I would, I would like to say that to you, but I, and no buts, but I'm just wondering how many parking spaces do you have delegated for each building? Any or?
If you look at the site plan that's on the screen right now, they're in the gray area, it shows the parking spots.
Okay, all right, that's what I wondered. All right.
Sure. It's a little, I'm not sure why we have the buildings blue.
Okay. So it sounds like a lot of parking and a lot of customers, but no bathroom?
At this time, I've reserved an area that it's in the narrative there that I've reserved that area in between the buildings to add a drain field.
Okay.
Until you know what the use is going to be, you wouldn't know how to size a drain field or how to size anything. So and it, and it takes so long to get the buildings up that it's tough to find a customer ahead of time and then have them wait till you build them. So it's easier to build them, get close to being done. Even on the other side of the road, I have not made them available to anybody yet because we're not completed yet. Of course, the coronavirus didn't help out much either, but once we complete them, then we'll, we'll look for the customers and identify the services that we need.
Okay.
And maybe, maybe a better way to understand that is the buildings that are across the street actually have sewer and they have water. There's eight water taps that go to those buildings. There's a full sanitary system and oil separating system for floor drains and stuff that are installed over there because we do have some prospective customers that need bathrooms. And we've actually permitted and built some bathrooms over there.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think there were some quick questions or maybe, I don't know about questions, but as far as a landscaping, I know there was, there was one thing that was brought up with the landscaping along one hundred and thirty-fifth. And I, I think the point we kind of looked at in lieu of, of doing like a set landscaping design or whatever, that we leave the remaining trees there as a buffer. Is that, is that correct?
Correct. There's a split roof fence that I put up a few years ago now that runs along one hundred and thirty-fifth. And the area where these buildings are is, is already been cleared a couple of years ago. But the tree line that's along one hundred and thirty-fifth, that's kind of mixes in with that fence. The goal is to leave that in place as a screen. That way it's natural and we have some mature trees there. Now that first building has the frontage on, or the face on both sides of the building. So the building that faces one hundred and thirty-fifth has the windows and the brick and the siding on both sides and only the garage doors on the parking lot side. So it has the changes in the roof elevations, the door merge, et cetera, just because I looked at one hundred and thirty-fifth realistically as being the a frontage road. And then I guess I, I personally see a, a frontage again when you're in the parking lot looking at it. When Linay had written up a writing that considered even commercial road as being a, a frontage road, but I don't know that we can have three frontages on these buildings.
I think that buffer looks really nice. I walked it the other day.
I do too.
Yeah. And then, then there was a question, and maybe this isn't even part of the commercial, but the, to the direction they're going near is to the I guess would be to the, to the west.
There's a north arrow on the screen pointing to the right, which is north. So west would be towards Lake Michigan, which would be on the far side of these buildings on the others.
Correct. And then, is that part of the commercial area or is that? Is it not?
No.
It's not?
Okay, it is not.
Okay. So that's why it just says existing tree buffer to remain because that's the intention because it's not even part of the commercial piece, I guess. So.
That's correct.
Okay.
Great, there is. There is a little area that's down the road a little ways that we've offered to the township, some acreage to put a city well in, but that's quite a ways down the road yet. So I, I don't see that interfering with that tree buffer that's next to it.
Are there any other questions or comments for Scott? Linay, do you want to re-review your, your recommendations?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Um, I just want you all to know that Scott has been in a couple of times to talk through his layout and site plan and we appreciate the great communications that we've had. And also I do recognize that Scott has been kind of in the middle of COVID and you know, I appreciate your patience with us. So thank you. A couple of things that I just wanted to point out, I don't think it's anything that pulled up any kind of conditional approval, but I did want for us to talk a little bit with Scott about his intentions in terms of like condominiumizing the building. And just where those parcel lines are, I'd, I'd like to see perhaps an updated plan for our record that shows two hundred and fifty feet of frontage for this portion of the parcel, if he is going to be kind of.
But which road are you calling the frontage then, Linay?
One thirty-fifth. Yeah, one hundred and thirty-fifth.
I think it's two hundred and sixty-seven feet, I think from.
It's a corner lot. Kind of getting back to the site plan. Um, this was two hundred. So are you taking, is this two hundred plus, I guess, twenty and plus seventy? Okay, so we are at two seventy. Thanks.
Right, it's two ninety minus thirty-three.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry about that. But that's met, so we're, we're good there. Also, the setback from commercial road, I wasn't sure if you're taking the setback from the center line or the unit line. I can go back to that drawing. Sorry, it's a lot of skipping back and forth. So is the setback? I wasn't sure if this is is this your unit line and then you're measuring the setback from this hatch line or from the center line?
Can I blow that up? Nope. There's seventy feet from the center line and the road right away sixty-six feet. So if you take thirty-three away from the seventy, you're left with thirty-seven feet from the road right away. But our road is thirty-two feet wide. So I'm not exactly sure what the question was now that I say all that.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that you're seventy feet from, I just wanted you to clarify that, and be from the center line.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. And then, um, no, I'm not going to go through the standards that have been met, but I did want to point out that the township engineer would like stormwater calculations. We're adding, Scott's adding impervious surfaces with pavement and also the rooftops. So we've added a condition that stormwater and the drainage requirements of the township as well as the drain commissioner be adhered to. So before any permits would be issued, that will be reviewed and verified by our township engineer. We also wanted to just talk about the landscaping because I do, we do appreciate the buffer and the preservation of the landscaping, but, um, the buffer yard along commercial road does need to be, it also is considered a front because it's a corner. And we do have additional requirements there that aren't met with the landscaping that you've stipulated. So we're requesting as a condition that a landscape plan be prepared and that the landscape plan adheres to the buffer yard requirements along commercial road. And also if, if you are preserving any buffer in the front, then I just think that should be noted on the site plan. I do see you're preserving a buffer on the north property line or opposite commercial road, but I don't see that noted along one hundred and thirty-fifth.
Can I put in the narrative that the?
Well, we'd like it if you could just update the site plan to show that this area along one hundred and thirty-fifth, it's, if it's a buffer yard, then you need to show that it is also preserved, kind of like you did on this side. This east side. And then some landscaping requirements along commercial road because it's also a frontage and that's stipulated in our ordinance. So we need more shade trees, more ornamental, more shrubs.
Your ordinance is, is pretty clear on specifics for running foot and stuff. So obviously I can modify that. I just was trying to put in some big evergreens and stuff in there that would drown out the rest of the landscape later, but I can change it to your ordinance if I like it that way instead.
Thank you. Um, I mean, it's probably a yes and. We do require some evergreens, but it's also adding some shade and some shrubs.
Hi.
Yeah. And then I will go back to that report. Uh, we were good with the driveway. We're good with all the other standards. Um, we just wanted to ask about trash removal. We do require dumpster enclosure. We added this as a condition of approval. I don't know if you want to share anything about trash removal.
Um, at this point, I don't anticipate any dumpsters. At this point, we're thinking if there's trash removal, it'd be Herbie Kirby's that'll be put out for the day to be picked up and then rolled back inside. If there becomes a use that requires the dumpster use or whatever, we'll have to come back and visit Linay and, and follow your ordinance standard. But at this point, I don't anticipate that we're going to do that at this point. Maybe a better way to answer that is I don't want to build a trash enclosure for somebody for no use, I guess.
Okay. Well, we can keep that condition that if it becomes necessary that it would be required.
Yeah, most definitely.
The engineer did mention that floor drains, um, now really a lot depends on that, those final uses. So I think we should add that. You know, I guess any future permitting for bathrooms or if a use requires a floor drain that that will be required by either the owner of that unit or by the developer?
Yeah, and maybe a comment on that, Linay, is unless something has changed since I built the ones on the other side. Elgin County Health Department handles the sanitary and the oversight on the floor drains and the oil separation. I didn't deal with the city engineer at all or the township engineer on bathrooms and stuff. I mean, I obviously had plumbing and HVAC permits and electrical permits from your township inspector, but I don't remember that we had oversight on the septic system or floor drains from the township.
Well, we are, yeah, we are involving our township engineer kind of as, as much as, as we can because we're certainly not all experts in that arena. But I think one of the times when it's particularly helpful is that we do have hookup fees for, you know, utilities that are based on REUs that often relate to the quantity of bathrooms, for example, and those end. So that's, you know, sometimes when we want to trigger that. And of course, in terms of floor drains and oil water separators, we just want to make sure that we're, you know, keeping our environment at the forefront. Um, outdoor.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah, outdoor storage is not shown on the site plan, so that is not allowable at this time. We did just add a condition that if any waste materials are being stored, we do want to be aware of what those materials are. We do need those listed and shared with the fire district. It's just becomes a public safety stand concern, especially if something were to occur, they need to know if something's in there that could threaten their life. And then in terms of the architecture, um, we did want to talk a little bit about the building wall that faces commercial road if any, the planning commission feels that any architectural features are needed on that elevation. And then the other comment about the architectural is that well, you are required to add some windows facing commercial road to meet the fifteen percent transparency requirement. And that might be enough in terms to break, of breaking up that facade, just adding those windows which are required. And then.
Are those, are those a requirement or a commercial boulevard or is that at the discretion of the?
No, they're, they are a requirement. The difference, when you're a commercial zone, the requirements have a higher threshold than if you're industrial. And since you are in commercial, our standard is right here in the report. That's just a copy and paste from the ordinance that says a minimum of fifteen percent is required on any facade facing a public or private road.
So in this particular case, the building that's closest to one hundred and thirty-fifth will actually have three sides of frontage.
Um, I mean, counting the, the side that faces the buffer, I was counting one hundred and thirty-fifth and wrapping it around to commercial road. So I don't know, Commissioners. Well, the, the front building facade seems to face commercial road. Is that correct? The facade of the building, the front of the building faces commercial road?
I looked at it more as there's, there's a parking lot between the buildings and I assume that the, the front of that with all the garage doors. The front of that with all the garage doors faces the parking lot, the gray area. But 135th, the building on 135th has that on both sides. What Linnae is saying is the 60-foot side of the building over here. Which on that front building now, that side and the west side of that building is the only piece that has any steel on it. Because the rest of it's either.
That really is not the, the front building facade, is it?
My mind it isn't, but.
Yeah.
Just going to hide it with landscape. Usually a front of a building is something you drive up to and you walk into. That would be a side yard in my mind because there's no doors in it and there's no way to go in on the side of the building there.
Would you be able to put windows on the 60-foot side to meet?
That's actually the back of the building there. Not a side. That's a pretty good example. Yeah, I mean, we can put windows in it's just windows to nowhere. But we can do that.
So just, just to mention this though, I'm not sure if that would be acceptable here, but I've often seen on buildings like that. They're almost like fake windows. You probably know what I'm talking about, Scott, but. And sometimes they do that just for aesthetics versus. Really needing or wanting the window and I don't know if that would be acceptable here, but then you wouldn't have to cut in windows. But that's done on several commercial pieces.
Right, it's done across the street. Windows to nowhere. So.
You're fading out, Chris, or sorry, Scott.
Sorry, I'm.
Now you're back.
Way in northern Michigan here. Sorry about that. I don't know what part I faded out, but be happy to do. The planning commission would like to see that.
And then just the last item. It was. Me just to confirm with the planning commission and you can talk about this after this report is over, but the roof is metal. I just want to make sure the commission knows that. And that we do have a requirement that there be recesses and projections in the plane of the building. And I believe it's met and I can sort of see it with the. Kind of that wainscoting, that brick, that faux brick on the bottom of the building and then with the windows projecting, but. I didn't see any dimensions on those drawings to just make sure that the recesses were at the.
If you go back to the building plans that, that I put in there for the fire department. And you've looked at the building across the street, it actually has changes in the front elevation. I think six different times. To be able to meet your standard. See him over there a little bit to your right.
Yeah. All right, good. So that is met. So I believe that's it. I mean, those can remain as conditions and we just know that they're kind of checked off in terms of. Yeah, it looks like the only condition about the building were those sidewalls and complying with the architectural standards, so. We've got the landscaping planned to be updated. The dumpster detail and it says if applicable. Clarified the parcel dimension, so we're good with that. And then just other general conditions, so we should keep those in any motion by the planning commission.
Hey, thank you, Linnae. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments for Scott? Okay, at this time I'd like to entertain a motion regarding this site plan.
All right, it's, it's Helmrick. Can I ask as well as a question? In looking at the recommendations here, do they satisfy the issue we were just discussing relative to the walls to the. I mean, the windows to the east, because that is the side that the public will see the most often coming on 135th.
So it says building rendering shall be updated and also provide for the sidewalls of the building. You could add. Consistent with the township's architectural standards.
Yeah, if that, if that would. Adding windows, whether they're fake or not, on the side facing Blue Star, I would suggest we do that.
Yeah. I do too. Yeah, that's good. So I'd recommend just adding that verbiage to condition 11.
It basically already says that, isn't it? Building rendering shall be. For the sidewalls of the building, building architecture shall comply with the standards of the zoning ordinance.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So it, it already. Covers that, I believe.
But again, is sidewalls explicitly clear? Because.
It does say sidewalls, right?
No, but I mean, is that the back wall, is side or apply to everything?
Oh, I guess I would say facing Commercial Road, right?
Yes.
In any public frontage, private frontage.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
I will move that we approve. The site plan for the wholesale, sales and service. Based on. Meeting the recommendations. That were. Included in the packet.
Okay, we could say including the recommendations included in the. Memo. To the planning commission dated June 16th.
And it's 11 conditions.
Well, 12 conditions.
Yes.
And if there are fire. Recommendations. So it does say that the fire district review shall be completed and conditions. That's number four.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion by Welk, a second by Israel. Any other further discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Welk?
Yes.
Preetz? Yes. Helmrick?
Yes.
Israel?
Yes.
Eily?
Yes.
Lozano?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Scott, for your time.
Hey, thank you guys for your time. Would you guys be disappointed if I left the meeting now? Now I'm.
You're welcome to leave. Bye, Scott.
Bye bye, guys. Thank you.
Okay. Number 200 new business, Justin Meyer. Located at 6333 Old Elegan Road within the. I-1 district, 18 buildings for storage and warehouse uses. Square footage of buildings ranging from 7,200 square feet to 2,800 square feet. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Alby to. Present information.
All right, I just. Alby, who starts this video if you'd like. And hi, Alby.
How you doing? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, this is Alby Blomar from 3210 62nd Street, Sault Ste. Marie, Michigan. Is that what I'm supposed to say?
Yes, if you want to just talk a little bit about your request.
Oh, well, my quest is that we're going to put eight buildings up there. It'll be under the I-1, whatever zone for it, like people could do. The units would be 30 by 60. And 22 by 60. And they would have plum for a bath. The people want to later on put a bath in is okay. We got the health department approved for the septic for the bathrooms already. And we're going to do not pole barn, but I elected to put foundations in and stick built because it's better construction. And in the south, we're doing just the storage units. They would be 12 by 20. And then as far as the buffer zone, like I said, we left from the front of just 63rd Street. I'm only supposed to have, have 15, but I knew that wasn't going to be enough. And I left 105 feet because I have property around here and I've done subdivisions. And I'm a homeowner and I don't want to wreck anybody's value of their homes. That's why I called the people across the street to address their problems. As far as that sign, I told Al. You tell me what you want to put on the sign and I'll put that sign up so people don't go in. To their subdivision because they really don't need no need to go in. I don't know what else to say here.
Alby, are, are these going to be done in phases? What are your plans as far as?
Well, the first phase I would love to do is as you pull in Justin Meyer Road. And the first set of buildings, you would make a right-hand turn. And those two first buildings, I would put the foundations in. So I could put stone everything and put asphalt in because once again, winter is coming. And that would base the rest on sales as to the north. And then we would move to the west.
So, so your plan is, is to do those first four buildings to, to the north of Justin Meyer Road?
Yes, well, just the first, as you come just to Meyer Road, the first set of buildings going. If you're going westbound, if you turn right going north, the first two buildings.
Okay.
There, I would put the foundations in so that way I can put asphalt in because November is right around the corner.
Sure.
And you have to asphalt to close any units or do anything, you have to have asphalt so that, you know, is. That all I would do with this year, I guess, if I sold more, then I would move to the north.
Okay. And then what are, what are your plans for starting the storage buildings to the south?
Well, we got our hands full going to the north, so just there I was just going to do everything I was going to the planning and doing all the. So the site work, so we contain the water, put that retention pond over there. And then I was going to just do everything at once. It seemed like it would a lot easier. Because on that west, on the south, where you see the storage units, to the west of the storage, you can see the retention pond. Just south of that retention pond in that stain and that, where that property line is. That would be outside storage, no semis of any kind. It would just be people with fishing boat trailers or fishing boats or RVs or motorhomes. Same thing that I'm trying to do with the rest of the complex. No semis at all. I don't want them. As far as the outside storage would be tucked in behind there and nobody would ever, ever see it unless you come in. From Justin Meyer Road and drive south from behind the storage units between the pond. And the storage units to get there, so nobody would ever see it. So the retention pond and everything is, would, would be so we can drain all the water because the. On 63rd Street, those people in Hawthorne, there's no way the water ever be because it's almost a 10-foot pitch. From that door to the south. You know, and then everything we would take excavation and then engineer, Neaderville was working everything to go into that pond. So we don't flood anybody out.
Okay, good.
I believe Alby's engineer is also on the call in case there are questions.
And people, I was, Linnae had mentioned during the week that, that some of the people in Hawthorne, they were worried about. Hazardous waste or whatever, but Kurt from Lake Shore Environment. Who did stuff for bore drilling, didn't find no contamination of anything at all. And I have the reports, Kurt didn't have them, but he said he would get them to me. In the next couple of days if anybody wanted to see them, but. He did the same, he did the same environmental work for the people at Hawthorne Court 30 years ago, because I used to live on Thoram Lane. And that's when we lost our wells and they took, clipped water. Back there because that property back there from a dry cleaner, but anyway, there's nothing back over here.
What is, what do you think your timeframe is? I'm sure it, it relies on the economy and, and demand and everything else, but. What, what do you think the timeframe is, is for completion of your entire project here?
Well, I don't have that, I don't have that crystal ball, you know what I mean? I don't know what. Hopefully tomorrow I have 44 people show up and say, yeah, we love your buildings, we want to buy and then I call you tomorrow and say, hey, I'll be done real soon.
Right.
But as far as the landscaping down Justin Meyer Road. As you see everything and you look at like a couple of houses where I lived in the slight house estates. I do a nice job in landscape.
Yeah, that you do.
Curb appeal. You got to make her look, no, I mean.
Alby, I have a question for you. How would you address the concerns of your neighbors on Hawthorne Court who are concerned about traffic? And their children and the access road being right across from their development?
Well, once again, when I first laid the property out, I had it to the north. I was told by Elegan Road Commission that they wanted it here, so traffic control, so everybody's entered a highway. You can't have where they're coming out and 500 feet is my entrance. It just is, you know, it's confusing as far as, I can't see anybody going in there for what reason? Like I said, I would put a sign. But nobody needs to go back there because if a big truck goes back there, he can't turn around because I put a sign, there's no turnaround. Whatever signs they want, I will put up.
I don't see any reason for people. I, I don't see any reason for people going in and out of. This development here would have any reason to go on Hawthorne Court.
No.
None at all, you see the subdivision, we're going to have the brick, the stone pillars in front with the name on it. The guy is whatever, you know, he can't be paying attention if he goes to the left. And if he goes to left, he's got a truck, he knows he ain't going to go far because he gets pulled over for overweight or something.
How much traffic do you anticipate coming in and out of here? Sorry, this, this is David.
Forty units, each guy is, you know, a motor home or somebody in the winter time, you know, people if they have an RV or camper. No offense, a lot of people from here head south. So I can't control what traffic is going to be there. You know, each unit is only going to have one car that's going to go there. It's not like they got each, going to have six employees.
Yeah, I would think it would be minimal traffic in and out of there for a, for a storage yard and storage building.
I'm hoping, you know what I mean? I don't want to cause those people no grief.
I, I would like to remind everybody who is on the meeting that the chat is not for public comment. That is strictly for administrative reasons and would like you to stop using the chat. For public comment. Thank you.
I think one of the, one of the questions that was brought up during the public comment also was. At least I think it was, maybe I just jotted it down, but hours of operation, will it be a twenty-four hour?
No, there won't be. I don't, what you mean, as far as what? If somebody wants to go to a motor home at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night, I, I, you know, how do you say, no, you can't do that?
So you'll be able to, be able to access it twenty-four hours a day if you, for whatever reason you want it to.
Yeah, but like, I can't see how many people are going to go there at two o'clock in the morning, I, I, you know what I mean? Unless they're coming in from Colorado or something on your motorhome when you're parking in.
I wouldn't see many people doing that either, but.
Well, you never know.
Anybody have any other questions for, for Alby?
I have a question, maybe not for him, but for one of my colleagues. I'm just curious, I don't know offhand myself, but how many homes are situated in the Hawthorne Court area? Do we know?
I think there's eleven. I counted.
I see in the chat someone posted seventeen, even though we're not using the chat.
Okay, all right, okay. Well, that's a significant.
There ain't seventeen in a Hawthorne lane.
Well, it may be that it is planned for seventeen.
No, that's just a call for a second.
I think, I think that seventeen is both Hawthorne and.
That is correct.
And, and the other road, there's.
Thank you.
There's, there's two separate road accesses to that subdivision, one off of. One off Old Elegant and one off sixty-third street.
Do those roads connect? Andy or no?
Okay. Thank you. Two calls in seconds.
Lenay, if there's no other questions, can you go over conditions?
Yeah, sure. And you do have review letters from the township engineer and also the fire district. I did want to point out that there are lands around this area that have had contamination. And the township engineer did state that if anything is found. That could be contaminated. The applicant is required to report that. You know, if, if there's any dump, dumping of in the past and you find anything, please do. Let, notify the township and the, and Eagle and we'd have to work on a do care plan. But at this time, there's none that is, has been identified, right? So. In terms of our report. The applicant has adhered to the setback requirements for the light industrial district. That the site has been graded and, and some large trees have been maintained. Natural buffers are maintained along sixth third. We do not have any kind of tree preservation ordinance in this area. So there was no, there is no requirement for maintaining the vegetation. So we do note that the applicant has willingly preserved that buffer. Knowing that it's more significant than any buffer that could be planted. We did note the comment as a condition about the dumping, I just mentioned that again for the record. Township engineer has included comments and. We'd want to just reiterate that all of those conditions would be adhered to of any burnt building issued. In terms of landscaping and buffering, we certainly recognize the challenge of this zoning in this area. It's zoned according to our master plan. It's consistent with the industrial future land use, it's zoned for industrial. And sixty-third is, is, is that dividing line where we have residential on one side, industrial on the other. That being said, the applicant has included that buffer. And he intends to supplement and add to that buffer with plantings, two rows that are staggered. As well as install a decorative gateway into the property. Justinmere, we recognize the concerns. I've certainly fielded many phone calls and I appreciate everybody reaching out. And I have worked to be a bit of an intermediary and letting the applicant know the concerns. He does have a permit and did place the driveway in the location advised and recommended by the Kent County. The Elegant County Road Commission. Their best practice is to align driveways across from one another. Let's see, standard eight, nine and ten have been met. Trash removal, I thought that we should ask the applicant what his plans are regarding trash removal. On the property, do you intend to place any kind of dumpster, have any formal trash removal or will?
We'll put, we'll put trash enclosures for just two yard dumpsters, just like you see on like an apartment buildings or something. But I'll put all enclosures, each building will have one or maybe two buildings that share one. But I would put enclosures. Trash enclosure, there's not a problem.
We'll add that to the minutes. We note that there's no new exterior lighting proposed. So if any lighting is to be installed, we do require that it comply with our lighting ordinance. It should be dark sky compliant, shielded, downward facing. The applicant, the, the engineer, the township engineer did state that any floor drains. Depending on the, the end use would be required. That's added as a condition. We do want to note item seventeen, the applicant did make a change in his presentation and that he will be doing outdoor storage. If, when the site plan is updated. We would like to see the area denoted for outdoor storage and. Just reiterate that it would not be for any inoperable vehicles. You know, we want to make sure that there's no fluids or anything that would potentially contaminate those soils. And then we would require that any waste materials be disclosed to the township. We do want to make sure that the county health department is aware of that as well as the fire district, if that is the case. And then in terms of the architecture, we did not receive any renderings at the time of this review. Alby and I have discussed as part of his app, and that he intends the buildings would look similar to those at Just Barnes. Those buildings did meet our industrial architectural stand, our standards for industrial architectural buildings. But we would request that a condition be included, that we receive renderings of all four sides of those buildings. And that they do, and that they would conform with our zoning ordinance. So that condition is included for you.
Okay.
So.
I think you got the renderings, but anyway, I'll send them again.
Yeah, I'm, I wasn't able to find them at the time of this review.
Okay, not a problem.
We did add condition number nine, that the applicant provide detailed renderings to ensure compliance with our ordinance. We also added a condition, and this is not in the, the body of the report, though, that the two parcels be combined. Because we do see that some of the building is bisected by a property line which.
We moved that, we moved that building. I went to the engineer and he can attest to that. I told him that he can move it, I don't want it approached, so he moved it. So in between the eight buildings, the two sets of buildings, it went from a hundred feet to eighty feet. So we took the twenty feet that we needed to the west. So one piece of property is different from the other. I wasn't going to have that problem, we moved that line there.
He moved it over.
Here, here, we moved it in there because I told him we didn't need it for septic, we had the septic filled out. I told him to move it over.
Okay, okay.
And he'll have your new drawings tomorrow, he has them, I got them, I'll email to you, but I was, we were told no more drawings.
Well, we, we never like to have new, new stuff.
I understand, I just, not a problem, girl, you just tell us what to me, we'll get it to you.
Thank you. So those are the conditions. The applicant did say that he would add any signage if, if the planning commission wants. You know, I'm not sure if, you know, a sign, say, at the back, at the driveway as, as cars are leaving. You know, if, if a sign is needed that says, you know, resident, you know, no. I don't know, some kind of sign that would, would prevent people from driving across sixty-third onto Hawthorne. Or even a sign on Hawthorne with the owner's approval, I'm sure Alby would, would buy a, a custom sign that says like no truck traffic. No through traffic or something.
I do like the song, the sign says.
Yeah. So, you know, I, I'm not sure how we might handle that, but I, I know he, he's mentioned in this meeting that he's willing to do that.
Let me know how you word it and I'll put it up. I'll get it.
So we could just add a condition that, you know. Maybe, maybe that neighborhood organization, if they want to speak amongst themselves and if they want to propose, you know, up to two signs. That, you know, we would help kind of negotiate or, you know, work as an intermediary to help make sure that those signs are in a proper place. And, and have the language that the neighborhood is happy with. I'd assume they'd be a sign kind of like the size of a, of a caution sign or something like that.
Whatever you want.
Hey, are there any, any questions or discussion on the, on the recommendations that have been made by Lenay?
Yeah, Helmrick, I just want to clarify in condition number five regarding township engineer conditions. I just want to make sure that explicitly includes the, the need of a do care plan regarding contamination findings. And also the issue of either a letter of credit or posting a bond.
So the do care plan, if something were to be found?
Yeah, I mean, does that need to be spelled out more explicitly or does that, that wording in number five, because it's in the.
I think you could spell that out, that if something were to be found, that a do care plan would be required.
Could you explain that to me?
So should there be contamination found on the property? That the Eagle, the Department of Environmental or Department of Lakes and Environment would be notified. And a plan would need to be put in place between you as the property owner and that entity. That would outline how that contamination would either be contained or it would be mitigated. It would be kind of removed from the property. It would really depend on what that contamination.
Whether the findings say they have, we have to do, then we will have to do it, you know, whatever it is.
It is required of anybody, right?
Not a problem, it is what it is.
And then John, you mentioned a bond.
That's also in the engineer's recommendation, bond, the letter of credit may be required to ensure completion of the infrastructure. Do we need to discuss that or include that, do you think?
What is, you only have the road, I don't understand what infrastructure to, you know, I mean, the, I got to do all the site work to do the pads for the buildings.
You think it would include the road and are you extending any water?
I have to go to water across from sixty-third street.
Yeah.
I got to tap into that fire plug.
Yeah. So would be that infrastructure included in the bond or letter of credit?
And how much bond would you want?
So Clement, I think your engineer is, is on this call too. And Clement can work with you to come up with. What makes sense for that infrastructure. And Clement can also email the township engineer and just kind of go to make sure that that. You know, pass is the, our threshold.
Yeah, I can do that, no problem.
So it sounds like, John, you want to add those two phrases to number five?
Yes.
And then depending on the conversation with your planning commission related to. Signage. Like whoever makes the motion if they want to add that.
So we would add a number thirteen regarding signage for. Hawthorne Court.
Yeah, some signage that would deter truck traffic.
On the Hawthorne Court.
And soliciting input from those residents.
Correct, yes.
It might be like cautioning children in area or something, I mean, but I think it's really important that the residents are involved in that.
Any other further questions or comments regarding the, the recommendations and conditions? This time I'd like to entertain a motion.
I would. Make a motion to approve. Plan. As long as all the recommendations and conditions have been met.
The thirteen, the amended conditions.
Yes, the amended conditions.
Of the memo presented by Lenay Wells to the planning commission dated June sixteen, two thousand twenty. We've got a motion by Wells. Do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second that, Helmrick.
There we have a motion by Wells, a second by Helmrick. Any discussion, further discussion on the motion? They had like the call for a roll call vote. Lozano?
Yes.
Ely?
Yes.
Israels?
Yes.
Helmrick?
Yes.
Yes. Welk?
Yes.
Hey, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Albie.
Hey, thank you guys.
Appreciate your time.
I appreciate yours. Have a good night. You too.
Thank you. This time I'd like to move on to item number three of business, the master plan review memo regarding the five-year review requested by the township board. Lenee, would you like to, uh?
Sure. Sure, I'd be happy to go through this. It's, it's quite a, um, a long memo, so, um, I would be willing to just approach it with kind of going through it in order and just asking for questions on any of the items. But to give you a summary, um, the township board did a strategic plan and um, you all were invited, the public was invited to participate, and that strategic plan is publicly available. One of the items in the plan from the township board was to do a review of the master plan. And a master plan is a long-range planning document that sets forth kind of goals, objectives, and policies for how the township should grow and develop. Um, it includes broad public participation and, um, the last ti- and the plan was, um, adopted, I'm trying to see in my memo, I don't know the, the year, but, um, I don't know why this isn't in here, but it's a, it's a, it's a five-year master plan, um, that has a planning year of twenty twenty-five to achieve its goals. Um, but the plan can, um, it often spans about a twenty-year timeframe. And the plan, um, is a joint plan with the, with the city of Sagatuck, the city of Douglas, and Sagatuck Township. Um, the document was last updated, I believe about four years ago. Um, amendments were made in twenty sixteen. And the document, um, is quite an extensive document. It has a lot of history about the community. And, um, it has this overarching goal for improving quality of life, really, and maintaining the small town and rural character of the area. Achieving sustainable development and really considering future generations. So, um, every five years, the State Planning Enabling Act requires that the communities, any community that has a master plan, review the plan. It doesn't require that it be changed or updated. It just requires a review. So, um, the township board is considering that, that now is the time to do that review. And so this memorandum was the first step. And so I presented this memorandum at the board meeting in May. Um, and one of the recommendations I made was that we involve the planning commission as well, that, that I thought it would be good for you to have the ability to review the plan and also this memo. Um, just know that I'm not an expert in all of the categories of this master plan. Um, but I did take some liberty to include my perspective as a planner. Um, I've been working in West Michigan for sixteen years. Um, I've been working in townships, cities, villages, and counties. I've even worked for private development. So I'd like to think that I'm helping bring all of that experience to this conversation. Um, so that's kind of the lens that I look through. I also want you to know that I'm very, still very new to your township. This is your township. Um, I respect your insights and your, um, perspective. Um, I've only been working in my capacity at the township for a year. So, um, please kind of challenge any assumptions I make, um, in this memo. It's really collaborative piece. It's not anything meant to um, be the kind of end-all, be-all. But I did appreciate the opportunity because it's so important for all of us to be on the same page and to keep this document relevant. So I guess with that, I will kind of ask if there's any kind of questions or comments about the first four topics in the master plan. Uh, you know, community character really talks about how we preserve the small-town character of the township. Um, it talks a lot about farmland preservation. Um, it talks about even things like tree preservation, and you heard that come up today in some of the comments. Um, and in my estimation from the ordinance, I feel tree preservation standards are, could be a little bit more, uh, preservation-minded. Um, I, I, I feel like they're not as strong as they could be. It could be something that the planning commission wants to look at. Um, growth management, um, that really relates to how we consider, um, utility extensions because growth often follows, um, infrastructure. And, um, you know, sometimes people talk about leapfrog development. So when we extend utilities and we don't, you know, infill with other uses, um, we kind of leapfrog and that contributes to sprawl patterns of development. So, um, you know, in terms of growth management, this is really a, a call for all of us and the township board to really consider any utility or infrastructure expansion and how that might impact the growth management and the growth patterns in the community. You know, the goal is to really fill in where we have that infrastructure before we start extending forwards, is my take on that. Let's see, um, land use, um, the, one of the policies in that section is related to coordinating capital improvement plans. Um, and capital improvement plans are, you know, five-year plans and they set forth how the township and the city and the, the city of the village of Douglas intends to spend their capital. Um, it can be anything from sidewalks to parks, trails, but also infrastructure, roads and sidewalk and, and, um, utilities. Um, I guess the recommendation in this memo is to kind of have a more coordinated approach and, and work together where some of those infrastructure items maybe, um, abut or continue into the township. You know, because people don't really perceive there being municipal boundaries. It's just one trail system. It's just one set of streets. Um, so, so really collaborating. And then in, eh, in terms of agriculture, no real recommendation there, just more of a curiosity about, um, how many acre parcels are participating in the farmland preservation program. Um, I was just curious if the total acreage has increased or decreased over time, and then if it's decreased, I'm curious why, and I'm curious if there's a way that we can promote that program to residents because it does, um, help, um, offset property tax, which isn't always the best for the township, but we do get the benefit of that rural, um, character in that land preservation. So, um, I'm sorry, I'm probably going into way more detail on these, but, um, if you have any questions on these four items.
Are we gonna go through all of the items?
We, we don't, whatever is your pleasure.
Okay, so I just kind of wondered, um, I, um, when you were talking about growth management, I thought it was very interesting that it's important to have the infrastructure in, but I think what we see in a lot of other small rural towns is, um, the development without the infrastructure and the infrastructure coming later, and that's not always, um, an easy thing to accommodate. And I, I think it's important for us to be um, aware of that in our own community too, when we approve projects. And um, I, I also want to just say, when you have a capital improvement plan of five years, um, I would suggest there's some accountability to that plan. Um, not that, that I'm sure, I'm sure there is accountability to the plan, but it would be really great to see even the whole structure of this plan have some accountability to say, how are we doing in each area? Maybe quarterly throughout the process because I think it keeps people on task, especially if we're have, developing a long-range plan with two other cities, a master plan if it's combined with three, but I think the accountability factor is very important because we can come up with a great plan. And, um, I'm always saying to people, well, so how are you doing on your plan? And, um, so anyway, that's, that's my only thing. We'll say more when we talk more. But I think you're doing a good job, Lenee.
Do, do we think the, uh, there's going? I know when we went through this, um, the last time, Douglas had come forward and said they weren't sure that they were going to want to stay in the tri-community master plan process, that they wanted to go off and do their own. Do we know or has there been any discussion whether they truly want to be involved? Are we gonna do a tri-community one again, or are we, we gonna do individual ones?
Um, I personally have not heard that. I will just go to the end where I had some recommendations. Um, the, this plan does talk about a joint planning commission or another entity that would review site plans. Just like how kind of tapped out people might be in terms of another review body. Um, I sort of took a step back and recommended, at least initially, perhaps there be um, at least an annual or maybe it's biannual or even quarterly, um, meeting with, um, the diff, the municipal managers and the board or council commission liaison to the planning commission and the planning commission chair to just talk through use issues, development issues. That there's kind of a regular standing meeting of, um, those minds just as a way to honor that collaboration. And I think the topic you bring up in terms of the joint planning could be something just to discuss at that um, that meeting of that kind of land use collective. So, yeah, I said quarterly, that would be like a midterm goal of this review is that we start a quarterly tri-community planning meeting.
I think that's a great idea. Um, I mean, I guess this is a board project, is that correct? But um, they, they would have to identify people who would be representative of these specific areas so they can speak to that and the progress they're making and how they intend to get to the perceived goal that they were going to have. Um, but I, I think all in all, I mean, I, I was very impressed that they, that the board started the process and invited people to be part of it. And I know a lot of people did not participate. And, um, I didn't either, but I would like to have, but I, I do commend them for doing this on a Saturday.
In December.
In December, yes. No, I thought it was good.
Now, it's Helmrick. I wanted to just let everyone know, you know, at the last board meeting, we, we unanimously, uh, voted to support this document, which I think is incredibly strong and excellent overview. Because as we've just been mentioning in our strategy session last December, the board, which as you all know, we've now, we're all new, we've all only been in office for a year and a half. And this came up very high on our priority list to, you know, familiarize ourselves and review the master plan. And part of that is this process that Lenee is, uh, outlining because time does go fast. It was, it was, it was re-adapted, passed unanimously by all three municipalities in twenty sixteen, and now it's a year, a, a year away from being reviewed again. The Michigan Association of Planners urges municipalities to at least annually have a joint meeting between the planning commission and the board, again, to review the master plan, make sure, you know, are we on track? Are the things we want to see change? So I, I applaud the suggestions Lenee has made. I also would like to see us move forward with doing an, and our first annual joint planning commission board meeting to that end. And, um, I think it, I think it's good timing to look at this. Um, something I did after the board meeting, I reviewed this very carefully, and I hope everyone else will as well, as well as look back and re, you know, re-familiarize yourself with the tri-community plan itself. And I'm, I just drew up some bullet points of comments that either were shared by other board members or even some that are strictly my own. And I, I have asked Secretary Israels to share that with everyone else on the planning commission, and I just think it's a good exercise. It'd be great if everyone could, you know, take that as, as kind of a homework. You know, go through it and, uh, let your mind go because another thing MAP was instilling at a training I went to before the, uh, lockdown hit was planning commissions and boards, you know, we have a say in what, what the future is gonna be. And if we could be a little more deliberative in, in both bodies, I, I would applaud that where we're uh, being more proactive than, than reactive, waiting for someone to come to us with a plan, you know, a, a, a site plan or an SAU. So I'd love to see more of that developing in the future months if, if we're able. Everything takes time, but I think it's a time very well spent.
Yeah, one of the, um, I know at the, we, we had that presentation by Ryan Kilpatrick from Housing Next. And the township board also, um, had the same presentation. And John, I know you're gonna update us, um, later in the agenda, but on, um, in our master plan, there's a lot of language that really supports us looking at housing and attainable housing and, um, analyzing our ordinance to make sure that we are not sort of pricing people out, that we're really accommodating a diverse mix of housing types, which supports a diverse mix of people. Um, right now, new construction costs, um, in the township are around a hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot. So when you look at our ordinance, which has a minimum square footage for a house, one being one thousand square feet, that's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for that home, which does not even include the land. So, you know, when, when Ryan did his presentation, you look at what, um, minimum wage is, even maybe a little bit above minimum wage for police officer, fire, school teachers, you know, people in our community that are serving our, our community and our community's children, are they able to afford, um, a house in, in the township, a new, you know, a new house? Um, I know it's all about the choices we make, but we, we can be responsive in looking at our ordinance and identifying any of those barriers that we can maybe do some strategic amendments. Um, to, um, make sure that we're permitting that missing middle housing type and that we're, um, not kind of pricing people out by standards for house size of a thousand square feet. Um.
I also, I would just want to say that I think it's great that you're gonna read the book by Marhan, um, The Strong Towns. And, um, I read a previous book that was something like strong cities across America. And one of the things that was in the top, well, several things were in the top five, of course, five things were, but, um, library, a library was like one of the most appealing things and was congruent across all of these cities who were considered strong towns. And I thought, okay, so Douglas, our partner in our strategic.
And I thought, okay, so Douglas, our partner in our strategic plan is putting in a new library. And um, another thing was sidewalk, bike paths, bike path sidewalks, and besides houses. So, I mean, I thought those were very good points. I think that it's important to have some accountability to a plan, so you can take credit for the good things you're doing too, not just your, your direction and how to get things better, but take credit for what we're doing really well and what we're planning well. So um, I think that's an interesting book, and I'm excited for everyone to read that.
That's a great point, Becky, and I just want to remind us all that, you know, it's not the Douglas Library.
No, it's our library.
Douglas, it's a district library, and all three of our municipalities, all of our taxpayers fund that library. It's a great example of tri-community cooperation.
Well, and not only that, but I mean, it works with Fenville and Holland and Grand Rapids. I mean, if you need a book that they have, you'll have it in a couple days. So I think it's, it's a wonderful asset for our community. But yes, thanks for reminding me, John, but I-
I meant that in a very positive way.
I know you did. Yeah, in terms of, um, yeah, I put a link in here for Chuck Marone's book. I have a copy if anybody wants to borrow it. Um, I did read it and, and I listen to the podcast frequently. And I recommend it for anybody else listening and joining this call, it's, it's really a great resource. I am a little biased, I guess. Um, in terms of sidewalks and trails that you mentioned, Becky, we do have the Blue Star Trail, but one of the recommendations might be for us as a planning commission to look at how we connect to that trail, right? Sidewalks are certainly important, but we have kind of new uses popping up, um, you know, that, that might intersect or intersecting streets with the trail system. We also have new uses on Blue Star that are across the street, across Blue Star from the trail, so I'm quite concerned about how people are safely accessing those. We have spectators, we have the coffee shop, we have a new proposed marijuana retailer. So I think it might be time to have a conversation with the road commission about safety, pedestrian and bicycle safety at some of those key intersections. There's other things, I'm happy to discuss any other questions.
What do you, what do you see as the next step here, Linay?
So, um, I think next step, and if people want a little bit more time with the memo, maybe this is like a standing item on our agenda, we could just talk about the master plan, if anything comes up. I know that this is several pages and it's kind of a long evening today, but I, I would, I would enjoy other, others either reaching out to me directly, or we can continue this discussion on, on, at another meeting. I would like us to maybe start working on some of the zoning issues related to housing. Um, that's in our short term. So the short-term list that we came up with was the property maintenance and code enforcement, and that is something that the board has been discussing. Um, item number two is the ordinance amendments related to uses, use mix and attainable housing, so I can work on that. And then a sidewalk pathway plan. Um, maybe there's a couple planning commissioners that are passionate about that, that want to, you know, mark up a map, I can get you a zoning map, I can, you know, help out in any way if you have thoughts related to, you know, where we might want to see trail connections, or where we might need to improve crossings, that could help with any discussion with the road commission. And then, um, I think it's just independent study about strong towns, or any other kind of planning approach that might be relevant to the township. And please know that I'm available as a resource if you are passionate about this. Um, Griffin also went, went to planning school, we were on the board together for our statewide organization, so between the two of us, we probably have a pretty good library, and we'd be happy to support you.
Great, thank you very much.
Chairman, I'd like to suggest we add to the short term, if others earn agreement, that we try to move forward, hopefully in the fall, if we're allowed to meet in person ever again, with, with attempting to schedule that annual joint board planning commission meeting strictly to discuss elements of the master plan. I think it'd be a great practice for us to get started this year, if it's-
I agree, that's, that's a great suggestion. I think that's something that, that would be, benefit everybody, benefit the township.
I think that's a great idea, too. I think that we should probably have it facilitated. Um, what do you think about that? Someone needs to be in charge of it.
Well, it worked very effectively with our board meeting, board strategy.
And did you have a facilitator?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, that's what I was saying, yes, we did.
Oh, okay.
Very experienced.
I, I just think having someone keeping us on task and, and kind of going through it ahead of time, and that's always helpful. It'll be good for all of us. So I, I would agree, John, and Andy, and all of you. Let's do it.
All right.
Anybody else have anything to say along those lines?
Well, sorry to say this again, but I would also urge everyone, make a list, come up with your own bullet points after you review Linay's document further. And I just think it's, if we start by sharing some paper like that, it, you know, there's no downside to that.
Yep, agree.
So John, you made your list, so maybe we'll just add this to the agenda for our next meeting. Um, and if you all have time, you can even email me bullet points, I can compile them, you know, whatever might help you. I know that everybody has busy lives and busy summers, and um, lean on me as you need to, and I can help compile what you need.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Linay. Okay, moving on, uh, would like to, I don't believe there's any old business. Like to reopen the floor for public comments, if there are any.
Um, I see the hand raised for Stacy Workman. Stacy, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Um, thanks, thanks again for, appreciate that you guys have a, a very difficult night. Um, as I listen to the planning commission and the, the master plan, I just don't feel that it was executed in our situation this evening. Um, I don't feel that there was enough of a setback for trees to make it more visually and aesthetically appealing to the Hawthorne, Hawthorne residents. Um, I would encourage the, the board to consider in future meetings, in future rulings, that where industrial is meeting up with residential, that there be a mandatory 200-foot setback to preserve just the nature and, and the environment, so that there's more of a balance. Um, so I, I just feel that the board had an opportunity to maintain that balance this evening and executing what is designed in this master plan. And then it came, you guys felt, fell short on that when it came to the execution of creating that harmony, maintaining the character, preserving that balance, preserving the nature, preserving trees, it just wasn't there tonight.
Thank you, Stacy. Is there anyone else? Linay, are you showing anybody else wants to comment?
Um, I don't see any other hands raised at this time. Um, does anybody want to raise their hands? Mr. Doherty, Luke, S., Al, Eric, Richard Brady, I've, I've unmuted you.
You've got me unmuted, Don.
Yeah, Don, did you have anything you wanted to say?
You know, the, the signs, the signs going up are not going to stop what, what you think it's going to do, if people are going to turn the traffic. We have 271 units are going to be done at the, when this thing is done, 271. That's going to create a lot of traffic on that corner. I don't care what he's saying about the four units he's doing on the north side, he's going to finish that thing out, and, and there's going to be traffic going in and out of there. And we've got kids, we walk our dog there, we walk our dog, and we have a hard time with cars almost hitting us now. So what happens when you have all these trucks coming in, and all these RVs coming in, and we're trying to walk our animal on that street? A street that, you know, that's how we get everywhere, the dog park and all that stuff? It's becoming so commercialized, I mean, we can't hardly walk on the road anymore. So why don't we get our sidewalks like you're putting on Blue Star? I mean, we got to think this thing out. He's actually had another property that, that is a terrible property in Douglas, and you're letting him do this, I don't get it. So that's my say, I'm out.
Anyone else? Luke? Al?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Yes, I confirmed that I talked to Alby about the signage, and I know it's a concern of all the Hawthorne members, but I have some other issues here. Alby mentioned that there's retention ponds on the property, is that correct?
Yes, there is.
Okay, are the retention ponds used for the fire department?
Well, Al, this, this is not a question and answer period, this is a period for you to just state what you want, but that-
Okay.
-is for drainage.
Okay, I, I, I'm sorry, okay, then I'll just go ahead with it. Being that these storage units are fairly large, and it sounds like they're going to be constructed of wood, basically, my concern is on fire prevention. Uh, now, this development is located west of Pheasant Woods, and when coming out of the west normally would push any type of fire embers into Pheasant Woods area, which is heavily wooded. Now, my concern is on these large storage units, there's probably going to be combustible material and/or caustic material stored there. And I want to know is, on the mechanical plans, is he submitting any type of fire protection, be it either a fire alarm system or, and/or a sprinkler system? Um, because uh, fire prevention is definitely important, especially being across from a wooded residential area. Uh, that's about it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, that's all I'm seeing, I don't see any other hands raised. Um, thank you.
Can you like to close, uh, public comments? Board discussion, does anybody have anything they'd like to add?
I'd like to give my report, Chair, Mr. Chair.
Sure, go ahead, Joe.
Okay, I'll try to go quickly, but since the, the planning commission last met, we've had two board meetings, May 13th and June 10th, both were conducted via Zoom. Uh, on a related note, just so everyone's aware, last Monday, the township office reopened to, and staff resumed more of a full-time operation. And we're operating, operating under some really great protocols and procedures relative to COVID-19 that were instituted by our manager, Griff, Griffin Graham, and wish us luck with that. It's all, it's all going very smoothly so far. The two last board meetings, public comment was primarily between them on both buoy placement in the Kalamazoo River, and also further comment on the Van Horn sand mining and, and pond project. Uh, we already discussed that our zoning administrator presented their master plan review, and we are encouraging the planning commission to work with us to move forward on our first joint meeting, which we just discussed. Uh, we tabled, until further notice, consideration of a wellhead protection ordinance. A public hearing was held on the fiscal year 2021 budget, which will take effect on July 1st, which is next week. Uh, we had a tentative me, uh, approval, and then the, the public meeting was on June 10th as part of our board meeting. The budget was unanimously passed, it's available on the website, website, if you want to look into it more carefully. Uh, just one thing to point out is, prudently, we're expecting at least a 25% decrease in profit sharing revenue coming from the state of Michigan because of the current situation. However, we still were able to accept a balanced budget to move forward, so let's watch this space. We did subsequently approve the buoy plan for the Kalamazoo River. We went with the same plan we've had for the last couple of years, with no increase in the number of actual buoys placed in the river. Uh, we approved a contract, you may have read in the paper, for the southern portion of the township with a new ambulance provider, Life Ambulance, who was replacing AMR, whose uh, request for a rate increase was exorbitant, and that's gone through. It will affect assessments in the winter bills for those in the ambulance district. Uh, tax collection season, I know this gets everyone, brings a smile to your face, but it actually begins next Wednesday on July 1st. It's presenting lots of new challenges for us in light of COVID-19. Uh, we're urging people, and spread the word, you can mail your tax payment in, you don't have to bring it in in person, we're trying to keep trafficked out as much as we can for the public's benefit and safety. Uh, let's see, Linay mentioned, we discussed at the board, further discussion on increasing code enforcement process and options. They have increased to the degree they can, as you can imagine, it's quite a labor-intensive issue that we are, will be discussing in more detail moving forward. Again, this was mentioned, but I just want to underscore, we did vote unanimously to request the zoning administration and the planning commission to begin the process of reevaluating our current ordinances on both lot size and minimum home style, home sizes. Ryan Kilpatrick gave his presentation that he gave to all of us several months ago, to the full board as well in the last two months. And let's see, this is just a reminder, it was posted last week, because that's the policy now, uh, two of our members of the planning commission, their terms are expiring at the end of June, that will be reviewed at the July board meeting by the full board. It's Chairman Greets and Commissioner Lozano, and I, I haven't heard, but if they're requesting being reappointed, we're asking that everyone who apply or be reappointed actually come to the board meeting where this is being discussed, so you can present yourself and questions can be asked from the board. Our clerk, board clerk Abby Bigford and myself, we were selected, we are doing a deeper dive into the current investment policy, both the policy and the strategy for the township. We currently only have one investment product, it's a CD with Chemical Bank. We think there's more we could be doing and should be doing, especially in light of the new economic challenges, well, I'll be facing. So she and I have started a, setting up appointments and doing more research to make a recommendation back to the board, probably in, in two months. Uh, the board meeting in June, we proclaimed June as Pride Month for the second year in a row. We also agreed to fly the rainbow flag, which is out front of the township, again, second year in a row, and we, uh, we were able to do this with absolutely no drama, uh, which I guess can't be said for the city of Sagatuck, but, but there you are. All right, those are my highlights, as I said, the next board meeting is July 8th, 6:00 PM, it will, unfortunately, or- As I said, the next board meeting is July 8th, 6:00 PM. It will unfortunately, or some would say fortunately, be conducted on Zoom because the, that requirement from the governor is in place right now, at least through July 15. If you have any questions, let me know.
I have a question for you, John. Going back to using life ambulances versus AMR, is, is it just a cost reason? I mean, we're still using AMR in our township up here, right?
They're serving the, the north from the Holland office, yes.
Okay.
It was not, I'm sorry. No, it was not just cost. That's a great question. But their increase, it was, it was more than double what had been budgeted and had been in the original village that was passed, I think, almost 30 years ago. And the emergency services committee, which is made up of the six townships and cities in this group, analyzed response times. Our representative on the ESC is Tony Shipa, who's done a lot of study and on response times. And they, they vigorously supported the notion of switching. And then it's also some relationship issues and corporate strategy changes that we all deal with from time to time. But everyone seems really pleased to be moving, you know, and life is based, life is, you know, quasi-local. It's Grand Rapids-based company.
And so they'll continue to monitor response time?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Okay, well, that's important. All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
I have one comment.
Yeah.
They paved Lake Shore Drive from M-89 to 126th Street today.
Lake Shore Drive, oh.
Well, yeah, we, we heard the cones went in. Again, as you know, that's, that's done by the county. We pay for it, but it's done by the county.
Right. But it was originally scheduled for last fall. They didn't do it because of lake issues. And they were scheduling again for the fall. And they started it out last week and they pretty well finished it today.
Well, that's good news. Thanks for sharing.
Now people can really speed.
Anything else? Anybody else have anything? This time I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Second. Motion, well, second by Lozano. Riley?
Yes.
Greets, yes. Lozano?
Yes.
Israel?
Yes.
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 Griffin?
I'm here.
You've been napping.
I drank. Something like that.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. That was good.
Have a good rest of your week.
Yep.
Thank you. Nice job, Andy. Thank you, Linnae. Nice job.